Got it now.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, I see the little red button that looks up a pumpkin up in the corner, right? Yeah, okay, got it. All right. So, I've got moving to Mayor comments. I just have a few to do to mention, reminding everybody that the 20th Census for Oregon is the country is on, and if you haven't it, you do it and encourage your neighbors. Oak Ridge is still at the bottom of the list for all communities in the county of response rates. So, means we need to step again. If you have already done your census, encourage your neighbors and your friends and your family to do that also. Very, very important to our community, as you all know, as far as the money that we get and the apportionment of very long. So, let's push that. I wanted to thank Kell and point out that the Governor did an executive order 2016, which I for greater flexibility for our city counties and special districts as far as budget issues. There will be, that will be coming out on that soon to explain what the executive order entails and how it affects communities. Specifically, I think it will affect us. It could. I don't think we're going to have an issue larger community. So, are very appreciative she said that. Oh, let's see. Oh, we're, it looks like we're about two weeks out on our, our peak for the COVID-19 virus here in Orinac. The prediction that in the next, well, in two weeks, they're expecting the peak to hit and then begin to drop down. It may happen sooner, and of course, we're hoping and praying that that's absolutely back. Do I have any other announcements here? I do not have any other announcements other than that. And just in general, that I think Oak Ridge doing really good. We obviously have been minding our P2s and everyone seems to be very cooperative. I've seen lots of smiles and friendly, friendly people out waving and just making the best of a, of a, of a sad situation. So, move on to council comments. If there are any comments in general, we'll move into the things that you counselors submitted, that anyone want to say. If not, let's first move into, let me on my list here.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Bobby.
So, you know what? With all the stuff that's going on with COVID-19, there's so many people in our community that have stepped forward and are really helping. And through my job, I'm able to see a lot of, a lot of people in our community that are doing a lot of great things. So, at our mail site, we have some great volunteers that are still showing up, still participating, still delivering mails and making sure people get what they need. And I think it's important to recognize what they're doing for our seniors. And then throughout our community, we have a lot of home care workers that take care of folks within our community, and they're still going and seeing their people. And I think it's just fantastic that they're doing that because in seeing them, they're making sure they have food. They're making sure they have their necessities and, and have the care that they need that allows them to be independent. So, just want to recognize that we have a lot of great people in our community that are doing a lot of great things for each other, that are really, really contributing and making this a much better situation than what it would otherwise be.
That's wonderful. Thank you for bringing that up, Bobby. And in addition, and what, you know, the view that you have in your sphere of influence, are you seeing any, any red flags that we should wear off right now? Or do you feel like we're getting things too loud?
You know, I'm not seeing a lot. I'm not getting a lot of calls, which to me is good. No news is good news. But me personally, I'm reaching out to people that are in my case, though, but that doesn't mean that's everybody that's a senior in Oak Ridge. So, I've had a few little calls and I follow up with those. But other than that, it seems to be going well. People are listening. People are doing what they need to, and all the businesses are, and like the pharmacy and other places are doing what they can to, to keep people safe. And so, I think that's great.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you, Bobby. So, let's go into, let's see, Chrissy said you want to talk about the OIP office building.
Excuse me. Yeah. Since, since I became a counselor, one of the topics has been moving the police department over to the OIP office building there, right off of Highway 58. And I remember Phil Messina talked about it. Marsha talked about it a little bit. It's been talked about in ODAC meetings. It's been talked about at a RAIN meeting, but I don't know that it's actually ever made it to the council discussion. And I had the opportunity to actually tour the police department, and I don't know if all the counselors have actually been inside the police department before. If you have, it's not a very big tour, but it's quite surprising what they work with. There is very, very limited space, and I was just, you know, out of all the years I've lived here, I can't believe I've never actually walked through there before. But, you know, there is a sewage pipe that literally is in their office. The working conditions in there are pretty low, pretty poor, in my opinion. So, I think it's something we should talk about as a council and try to help our police department and our staff have a little bit better working conditions. And that, I've been in the office building before, and it is a great space, and it's really underutilized. And I think it's just our topic that we should discuss about getting them moved over there sooner rather than later. That's all I have.
No, that's a lot. Appreciate that you brought it up, right? It has been a topic that's at different councils, means that in different meetings, been pursued and discussed by the chief and reports went about how much it would cost. And so, I think it's appropriate to put on a future agenda for direction about what do we know about it? What does it mean to move? How much that costs? What is the time involved and all those things? Well, perhaps we can forget that for, for later in May and get it on the agenda so that we can have a discussion. Let's let Brian out to chief to see if he can still gather information up. I know at one time he had all, I'm sure that he had kind of presented when we were talking about earth, I think it had to do with earthquake readiness, buildings. And one of the discussions was we could move, move out of City Hall and move to the OIP office if necessary, and he brought some figures. So, Brian, if you would put that on your list to add to May agenda and let them know if you need more time to put them together, just initial material that we get to look at, and we can adjust as a fair. Does that sound okay with you, Chrissy?
Yeah, it does. And one thing I forgot to mention was, I know that you, Mayor Holston, and I believe Brian attended that RAIN meeting we had a while back, and we discussed about, and I know Rick Zilstra was there. We discussed what we would do with the existing space that the PD is into. So, that would be a good part to bring up in that, you know, what that space can be utilized for other benefits.
That sounds good. Kell, are you in agreement that you'd like to see on the future agenda items? Can you do a show of hands there? If you have, good. Thank you. We will do.
Cue it up for May, Mayor.
Huh? Okay. Cue it up for me. That sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And see, John, who brought up the issue of that warranty that we represented by a company to offer the city, and we put it on hold so that we would have a chance to look at it. Council, it wasn't formally agenda, so I don't have the paperwork attached to it. Are you at all at a point where you would like to see it on the next agenda meeting or the next meeting, agenda discussed, and either say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, to everybody. So, a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Thumbs up? Okay, good. Awesome. So, can we put that on our net agenda, Brian, to review that warranty and be able to make it on it or not?
I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. And let's see. What else do I have here? Oh, banners. You wanted to talk about the banners at the school. Is that correct?
Oh, yes. I really don't know a lot about it, other than what I saw on Facebook. Someone in the community's been looking into prices to get banners made for each of the high school graduates for this year, and maybe they could be post hung along Highway 58. And I know that from what I saw, a lot of people are willing to financially contribute to it, but there's also people asking if it's not something that the city could pay for. So, we wanted that to be discussed.
Any inquiries at the school district at all? Or is that just all of what we know so far?
I can say a couple of things. Priscilla Davidson was one of the, the community people that was kind of trying to spearhead this. I spoke to her a little bit this afternoon, and she is working with the school probably this afternoon. She was trying to find out what the details are, but it does sound like the school's working on it. And I had mentioned, or I had heard that they are in contact with the city, and I see raising, Rick raising his hand, so I'm sure he has more info.
I see Rick, too. Go ahead, Rick.
I don't have a lot more info. All that I know is I have discussed this with my Public Works Crew Leader, as far as what it would take for us to physically put them up. Our discussion was not around us paying for it, but our man hours and our costs to put them up. So, this is something that's hit Public Works radar, but at this point, it's very preliminary, and that's about all I know. I just wanted to share that me and Robert have been talking about that as well, because we've hung, put up the, the snowflakes with the help of Lane Electric. We've put up banners for tree planting festivals, so it's stuff that we've done before. It's not something out of our, out of our norm. But yeah, so I just wanted to mention that me and Robert have been talking about it as well, as asking to come up with a rental price and a man hour price, and then we were going to discuss it some more. So, that's where we were at in that conversation.
Okay.
I had a conversation with the principal of the high school, who's kind of spearheading it for the school, and we talked through it, and he is actually going to go after Lane Electric to help maybe perhaps with the, the cost of installing, but I don't know where that is. But I told him we're very supportive, and if he needs some assistance to come back, and we'll go through it.
Perfect. Good. It sounds like it's been a completely guss in various areas and moving forward. So, I don't think we need to do anything as a council here. Sounds like if the community and the school and Brian, you let them know that Public Works is available and we're open for discussion. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Kathy, the, the cost I know is, well, I heard was $35 per banner, and there's about 36 of them, high school kids. Do you know if that's something, or can we look into whether or not we would have that anywhere in our budget? I don't have a calculator.
My initial reaction is that the school normally pays for graduation and graduation ceremony, which will not happen. Therefore, I think they probably have the fund, but I would be open to a request to school if they, if they ran short or have those funds. Not, not that I don't want to, to that for the, the students, but considering they normally pay for a graduate, that isn't going to happen. They have those funds. So, let's, let's see if they'll evade them, and if so, then we will certainly address that back.
Okay.
Excuse me. Is there any, any additions that I missed from any council? Go ahead.
I just, I'm sitting here thinking as we're having this discussion. I don't think it's a conflict of interest for me, because my son is graduating. So, he is one of those kiddos. So, I don't think it is, because we're not addressing any money, but I just want to throw that out there.
Well, thank you. I missed no one. You have to stop that situation.
Yeah. I'm grateful.
Congratulations, Bobby.
Yes.
Okay. There's no further counseling? All right. Then we will move on to the City Administrator, 10.1, all yours.
Thanks. So, 10.1.1 is the LCOG Intergovernmental Agreement Approval, which is sent out to you. We're looking for a motion from the floor to approve. And this is part of a, the over, the larger DEQ grant that you recently saw. They actually threw on an extra $10,000 to do this data analysis, and it tries to look at where, kind of where the health risks are from a geographic perspective. So, the lion's share of this work, it really is number, computer number crunching, so, which is why LCOG is involved, because they did have the capabilities to do that. And so, this is a intergovernmental agreement to allow them to do that work, not to exceed the 10,000, which DEQ gave us on a reimbursable basis. Your options are to approve or not approve the IGA. We're recommending to the staff, option one, and open for your discussion.
So, I'd like to make a motion. I move, I move we authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Oak Ridge and Lane Council of Governments.
Got a second from Counselor Forkum.
You're muted, Mayor.
I'm sorry. I forgot to hit the spacebar. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, please for vote. Jackie, will you?
Yes. Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield? Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
That was an aye. I saw her mouth or lips move.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor McClelland?
Aye.
And just.
Is Counselor Maxfield not there?
She's now been a little bit late. So, she is attached. She is here, but yes.
My internet went out there for a second, so I wasn't sure if he said Maxfield or McClelland, but aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay. This is 10.1.2. Title is the Oregon Department of Transportation Wireless Communications Site Sharing Agreement Extension. Looking for a motion from the floor to approve. You receive the proposed extension and the original sharing agreement. Basically, this came from a, oh, win, which was an effort some time ago, demonstrate cooperation between state and local agencies. And as part of that, you agree to share facilities that you have communication sites. It also has to, to actually get onto the tower, you actually have to have a specific supplemental agreement that allows you space on the towers, but this is an overarching umbrella above that. So, this actually renews the sharing agreement, because the underlying agreement to let them use Dead Mountain refers to it, so we actually have to update it. There is no fiscal impact. ODOT wants to exercise two 10-year extension options, so that would take it through 2040. And your, your choices are to approve the sharing agreement extensions or to not approve the sharing agreement extensions. The actual agreement for Dead Mountain will come up for renewal, which we will get another whack at if for whatever reason you wanted it. And so, the staff recommends option one, which is to approve the sharing agreement extension.
Thank you, Brian. Do I hear a motion?
Has anybody made him? Good.
I move that the mayor, we authorize the mayor to sign the wireless communication site sharing agreement between the City of Oak Ridge and the Oregon Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Counselor McClelland. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Counselor Hollitt says a second. And we are open for discussion. I, I have a couple of questions. So, this is an 10-year extension through 2040?
Two 10-year extensions.
To what?
In, in the contract, there's the, in the original agreement, there are two options to extend 10 years. It's a total of 20 years, so which is why it's going through 2040.
Okay. Okay. There any reason why the length of time I should be concerned, or is that just something that telecommunications is more desirable as opposed to less desirable? It's just a long time. Not a lot of it.
I think it's more of the fact that it just really doesn't authorize them to put any communications anywhere. It's just an agreement to work together. It's not really an agreement to put something on Dead Mountain Tower or Green Waters or anywhere else. This is just an agreement that we're going to, between the two of us, have a sharing agreement.
Okay. Okay. And you're comfortable with it?
I'm sorry, one more time?
You're comfortable with this, having read through it, that there are these changes from the last one that need to be incorporated?
No, I'm comfortable with it as written.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Council? There are other questions. Jackie, will you call for votes, please?
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor McClelland?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Thank you both. I must touch you there, Chrissy. I'm sorry. Okay. That passes. And Brian, let's move on to your situation report for the 19.
Right. It's, it's been pretty static as far as our response to COVID-19. We still have the fire department locked down. They're still doing, you know, the triage tent checks should someone approach. They themselves are giving themselves health checks twice a day. The police department is getting health checks, which is basically a swipe of a temperature gauge, right? So, our inventory supply, while not great, it's adequate for what we're doing right now. And I, I believe if you kind of read the tea leaves, it looks like some of the supply might be loosening up. And if we get into a critical situation, Lane County EOC does have a ability to provide a small number. Still, to my knowledge, that I do not see a case in Oak Ridge, though it's very difficult to assess that out if you have one or not, so, and probably rightfully so. Other than that, Public Works is still doing their twice a day, doubled it down on the cleaning of all the restrooms, public spaces, city facilities. And other than that, as, as we are before, my admin folks up front are teleworking. They do come in for brief periods of time, once or twice a week, to take care of those things that you just can't do over a computer. I'm usually in the office most of the, most every day, as well as Rick and Bill, and we keep our six feet apart. And the police, fire, and public works are all essential, so they are reporting to work as usual, but trying to maintain that physical distancing. So, any questions for me on COVID-19 reactions?
I had a question of how it's working for citizens as far as paying their water bills. Do you run into any glitches? What, was the office closed, or is it, it's pretty smooth?
It's been, I've asked Leah and Jackie a couple of times, and they, they said it's actually gone pretty well. You know, it is a little less convenient to have to be able to leave a voicemail in order to get a return call, but you know, it's, it's just part of dealing with the crisis that we're in. It's, the online payments are going well. The telephone payments where they, Jackie or Leah puts it in via the computer works well, and there are a lot of bills coming through the door. And so, that's why they have to come in a couple of times a week to kind of sort through those things. So, I've heard no complaints, other than a few citizens wish we would waive the 3% fee on the credit cards.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, a couple of weeks ago, or it feels like it was three weeks ago, Rick and I were talking about Annie making all the masks, and he had said that the city or somebody had donated some supplies to her.
I'll let Rick speak to it. He's, he's got the latest.
Follow up on that and see what that was about.
Sure.
Yeah, that.
I don't know if it was the city or if it was some other agency.
Those donations are coming through Lane County EOC. Public Works have been picking up from their, Lane County Public Works yard once a week. Tomorrow will be the second pickup. Unfortunately, it'll be the last as well. I got that information from Lane County today. But they've provided materials to make about 60 masks already, and with tomorrow's delivery, should be about 100 masks. So.
Can I?
Yeah.
Are those just masks that I know that Annie's been working to donate or to allow people to just pick them up, and if they want to donate, they can? But is that what those materials are going for, or are those specifically for maybe like our local medical facilities or?
Annie is distributing those as, as normal as she would. I mean, to be quite honest, with her distribution of those masks, we have not involved ourselves in. I don't think we've involved ourselves in is helping her get materials.
Okay.
Great.
Cool. Kathy, on another note, I had a question for Brian as part of the City Administrator stuff, and.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Brian, where are we at with those? I think you mentioned several weeks back that some grants were being applied for, for the fire department. Are those, do we have any info updates on those?
I wonder if we, Brian, we can't hear you.
Oh, he's muted.
Yeah, I see that. Brian, we can't hear you.
Got you now. All right. So, the one for the fire department equipment, Scott Hollitt did the heavy lifting on, and that has been submitted and acknowledged. So, we're just waiting for a decision on that. We're also working on a safer grant, which really is for fire department operations personnel. That is not due till May 15th, and I'll be filling, I'll be completing that one. Other grants is, trying to think of anything else. We, we did get, as I mentioned, the DEQ grant and the extra DEQ grant, and we have also helped the school submit a letter of interest for a refurbishment to their community room. They needed the city to be the sponsor, and so, it's a pass through, but we are, we helped them submit their letter of interest. And other grants, we are looking at submitting, Rick's looking at submitting a AARP grant to refurbish or put a, a, or a ADA accessible entry into City Hall towards the back, which would kind of hook up with perhaps moving city council chambers to that back conference room, if we do get it. Other than that, we had the letter of interest that was submitted and by the light beam for. Two generators, one for the fire department and one for the lift station. So, those are all the grants that are in work right now, Counselor.
Was that, was that one that you just mentioned for a generator? Was that the third fire department one? Because I, I think you had said before that there was three grants for the fire department. Because I, I think you had said before that there was three grants for the fire department.
The, no, the other grant is not eligible yet, as it turns out.
The third one?
Right.
Okay. Is there like a time when we would be eligible, or do we know?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Council, any other questions? And if there are not any other questions, Brian, I realize I slipped, I stepped over, lammers, reports from the chamber. Would you be okay if I entered it now before we did our finance, police, fire, and look works?
Certainly.
Okay. Linda, are you there? See your name up, and you unmuted yourself. So Council asked Linda to just come and report to Council about the, what's happening with the chamber here, working with the community and businesses here in Oak Ridge, and her to put in for monies and just what's happening. They've been on top of a lot of, as well as being involved in the response from Oak Ridge, COVID and grants and monies and things like that. And they have some new things that are going on. So Linda, if you have something to share with, I would love to hear from you.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate you giving me a little time. I don't want to repeat what I submitted in writing necessarily. And thank you, Brian, for circulating that memo. I realized when I was listening in on the council meeting two weeks ago that there was a gap in knowledge about what the chamber has been up to. And most of us on the board kind of have our tasks in front of us, and we, pardon me, stay real busy, so we forgot to report back, and I apologize for that. Given the situation right now, our focus is really to try and muster as many resources as we can for our local businesses so that they may reopen in the future. And secondary to that is to get back to our regular business. And one of those things we were able to do this week was float our new logo, which is something we've been working on for some time. The city had asked us to cease and desist from using an image very close to their own, and we were able to do that finally. And we also, just in March, hired a new board assistant, Elise O'Brien, who works just 10 hours a week. She's a very busy person with going to the UFO, caring for a family, and doing any number of other things around the community, so she's a great addition. Looking forward, we do want to keep going with our plans to do a fundraising event, which would be a shoulder season event. And that ties in with both tourism and everyone else who's in business, because things drop off in the fall and don't return until sometimes April or May, or even later, for businesses to be going full tilt. So we thought a shoulder season event would be a good one, and it's easy to capitalize on the forest resources here. So that was a theme that we picked. And Jason Niemer, who I'm sure you've seen several times recently, is the chair for the, excuse me, the, I get tangled up in the name. The.
Head of Honor of Service.
Thank you, Jason, yeah. It's gonna roll off my tongue soon. Anyway, one of the things we're doing in the near term with that is planting pumpkins all around town, and then we'll utilize those during our festival. And the beauty of that is whether we're able to have the festival or not, we'll have pumpkins, and we'll have a lot of fun with that. So I'll just leave it there and see if there are any questions from Council, or if you would like to give some feedback. I'd appreciate that.
I'd like to give some feedback. Linda, your letter that you sent out, or that Brian forwarded for you, was phenomenal. I loved reading through that and seeing all the things that the chamber is up to. I was, I was so impressed that I went to find the chamber's website and see how things were going as far as membership and all that. And I learned that your website is really updated, and I was very impressed with that. So much so that I just decided to become a member as a citizen. So I used the portal on the website, and it went really smoothly. And so I just, I just was really pleased with everything that I saw about the chamber, what's going on there. So thank you, and the whole board, for all the work you guys are doing.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Kenyon. That, that makes me smile.
You're welcome, Brian.
Yeah.
So I, I have something. So we had, a while back, had looked at approving money for the chamber to help them with all the things they are doing, correct? And we didn't do it?
Correct.
We were gonna get back to it.
So I'm wondering if we don't want to follow up with that again and revisit that, now that we've all had a chance to really see more of what they're doing and absorb a little more of that?
I, I think that's something that we definitely can entertain and ask the chair to come back to us with a request.
Okay, perfect.
Um, speaking of that, was, was that something that got submitted for part of our discussion for our work session?
Oh, I don't believe so, because it was a sec, I believe they came separately and just asked for separate, and it kind of went sideways. And so we, we filled it, didn't know anything further, and asked them perhaps they might just come back later to give us more information about it. And then we just don't need further with it. So I think this would just be a brave submission from them.
Okay, probably, I would like to suggest that we, I can do it if you want me to, dig up that old paperwork and maybe bring it to the work session, because I just am thinking in my head that it seems like it would be appropriate for TRT money, so maybe we should add it to that discussion.
I would, I was wanting to know what the pre-ass was, and I think it was for $10,000. I think the chamber has trained so much, though, that I would just see, and so much is happening, and that I would, I would really like to see them put a proposal again. And then the council can consider, we would like to support them through what handles, and then move, move on from there. We don't have to have them submit a TRT request, but just have them submit a required funding and a, and a reason why, and let it move from that thing.
I would, I would agree with Mayor Holston. That was actually, if I remember correctly, about a year ago. And I think so much has changed since then, that I think it would really be in their benefit that they update that and make it more true to what it is today.
Linda, are you listening to all of our comments, and are you willing to come back to the call with a, with a proposal for support?
Sure, um, sure, thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. I was remaining silent because of the decorum of the usual meetings and waiting to be called on that. That's all that was about. But yes, certainly, all the counselors are correct. A lot has changed. And I will email around to the board of directors and get some input. I don't want it to be just from me. And I like the idea of a proposal. When, when would that be due to you?
You know, I'm, I'm in budget season, but I would like to see it by, by the end of May. Can you do that?
Of first meeting in May?
Or the second meeting of May, just time in May.
Okay, all right, sure. Thank you.
Great.
I have a comment, too, before we move on.
Yes, Tricia, go ahead.
Well, first, I'd just like to highlight that I've been on that committee that the chamber has been involved in as well, in response to the economic parts of COVID. And I really appreciate that Linda is involved and all the players that are involved in that committee. That being said, I am curious, if we were to fund the chamber, I realize that they work off of memberships, but I would want to ensure that it would, that money would be used to, for all different businesses, not just members of the chamber.
Appreciated input, and that we'll consider. We have a proposal. Hopefully, the chamber heard your voice, too.
Yes.
So Linda, thank you so much for giving us insight into what's going on. And we appreciate the effort that members are doing, as well as the community, in helping to get us, to figure out how this applies to money and all that stuff that is out there in the land of COVID-19. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, you're welcome. Brian, will you move to finance director update?
Yeah, let me get him set up. He's got some slides, so it'll be a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Audio test.
Excuse me?
Audio test.
No, just not.
Make sure that everyone can hear you.
Okay, can, this is Bill. Can anyone, can everyone hear me?
I can hear you just.
Can you give me?
Comes up for me.
Are you okay?
Okay.
All right, I prepared a brief presentation here, update through nine months and the projections for the year. For the, because we are at nine months, and as part of the budget process, I've prepared a couple of slides here comparing our projected FY20 actual numbers with the budgeted numbers. So I'm just gonna run through those real quickly. The first slide you see here is our projected actual resources versus our budgeted resources. You can see here on the screen, so the columns on the left are basically the current, actual projected current year revenues. And the column, the gold column there is the, was the budgeted current year revenues, and working capital on, on top of that. So the bad news, it's not real bad news, is that we're about $325,000 short of the budget with the, with the projected FY20, FY20 revenues. And the reasons for that, the primary reasons for that are on the, can people, can people see the cursor?
Move it around. Yes.
Okay. So the primary reasons for that are in the column on the, on the columns on the right. I'm not gonna go in those in detail. If you have questions about them, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions that you may have on them. And there's some additional details on the variations between budget and actual down on the, in the narrative description down, down below, if you are interested in those. The second slide shows the projected FY20, projected actual expenditures versus the budget expenditures. And here's, here we have some good news, that we're actually $1.3 million, the actual is actually $1.3 million under the projected expenditures. So if you take the two together, the shortage in the revenues and the under-budget expenses, we're about $1 million to the good, basically. Which is, 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 is good news, because we can carry over that working capital to the next year to cover needed expenses next year. The, I would note, however, that, that the balancing process in terms of the budget has to work both on the citywide level and also on the fund basis. And so this does not affect the issue we have, with the fact that some funds are operating at a significant deficit. And these, the excess that we're generating here, mostly due to the proprietary funds, and in this case, OIP, which has a lot of cash working capital right now, will still be tied up to cover the deficits in those other funds. So this is a good result. If we had actually, if we, if we had actually expended what we budgeted, we would actually end up, had ended up with a slightly negative working capital balance at year, at FY20 year end. And we had no working capital to carry over the next year. So on an overall basis, this is, this is a good result. But we, does not resolve our issues on a fund-by-fund basis that causes issues on a citywide basis, having useful working capital. Just a couple of other items here, after looking at the projections and also the update for the nine months. I'm projecting now that we, that we might have an additional $102,000 or so deficiency in the EMS and general funds at year end, which might require additional support from, from the other funds. That's, this is over and above the $144,000 budgeted OIP loan that's going, that's going to go to the general fund. This would be in addition to that, so we would have to probably get some funds from, from other, a loan from some of the other funds. We'll probably be approaching you in May to talk about that. So I mean, additionally, EMS personnel costs have come out, which will require about a $3,000 addition to their, their budget. I'm monitoring a couple of departments for possible smaller bridges in their expenditures. There are nothing, at this point, if they occur, they'd be very small, and we could probably handle them with transportation expenses among, among the line items, so not too worried about those. Didn't want to mention that receipts in, ambulance receipts in the EMS are down significantly in March. They were only $23,000 versus an average of $32,000 a month for three or four months prior to that. And even the $32,000 a month was down substantially from last year. So I'm projecting a shortfall in that budget now by about $45,000 or $55,000 in the ambulance service revenues, which will, of course, unfortunately, increase our projected deficit in the, in the EFS fund. Too early for me to determine the impact of COVID-19 yet on revenues. I can't really quantify it yet, but we do expect a pretty significant decrease in travel and tourism-related revenues, like gas taxes, transient room taxes, liquor taxes, some of those things that you generally equate with travel and tourism. I don't really know exactly when I'll be able to quantify that. It mostly will take, I'll have to see some actual receipts come in to see what impact it's having, and compare those to what we would normally expect. In any event, these decreases I mentioned above will, will negatively impact the general fund's results for the year and possibly increase the need for support up above, that I mentioned up above line one of $102,000. And looking forward a little bit, I want to look forward a little bit, because year end is one thing, but from July until November, it's what I call the dead zone. And the reason I call it the dead zone is because the general fund operates at a deficit of over $500,000 during this time period, until the property taxes start coming in, in mid-November. And if ESF continues to this operations, it'll operate at a deficit of about $200,000. So the issue that this brings up is this will require significant additional loans from the other funds, which effectively ties up their working capital, so they can't use it for other purposes. This is the problem I referred to earlier, when I said you have to work on a fund-by, on a fund-by-fund and a program-by-program basis. Should the general fund repay these, these additional loans to the other funds, and it's gonna require immediately, it would require about 78% of the property tax revenues that they're gonna take in. So if we, if they repay those, they'll use a lot of the property tax revenues, and about two to three months later, they'll be back in a borrowing position again.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I, I'm, maybe I just wasn't tracking right then, but so, we said repaying these loans takes 78% of the property tax revenues that we don't receive, that we receive in November.
Uh huh, yes.
So we are, that only means with what, 18, 12% of the property tax to use in the offering fund? to use in the operating fund? I mean, is that typical? Do we always do this? I mean, I know we always have this period, but do we, you know, you, you're talking about taking loans from other funds than where we pay them back? Because I think we have to repay them back within a year and better sooner than later.
Yes, that's correct. We, short-term loans have to be repaid, repaid within a year. That's correct.
And it's not normal. This is, this is part of the overarching problem the city has.
Okay, okay. So, so we are digging ourselves into, into a 78% hole with what we're doing.
Of taxes.
Yeah.
That, that's correct. I mean, it's not that we will have an overall city deficit, but that essentially, because of the deficit in the individual funds, will be tying up all of, all of that working capital will be tied up in covering those deficits. Basically, we're shuffling funds from one to the other to, to cover those operations.
So the, the, so any, any planning that we would make to do improvement, like in the OIP as far as infrastructure, that type of thing, we wouldn't want to do that because we're gonna take money from that fund and loan out. So until it comes back, we're kind of on hold.
That's correct. In fact, I had this discussion with Rick, it was either earlier today or yesterday, I can't remember right, but some of these capital projects that we want to do in OIP, for example.
Right.
You have to time those just right because we'd have, basically, when the funds are tied up in, in terms of covering the problems in the other funds, we won't be able to use them until they're, they're repaid. And then there'll be a short period of time where they'll have enough funds to do the, do the projects, but then we'll be shortly getting back into a position where we'll have to borrow funds again from those, from those, those, the water fund and basically the water fund, the wastewater fund and, and OIP, to the extent we can borrow from OIP, which is limited.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Dawn, did you have a question?
Yes, um, so I learned several years ago at a tat, tat, budget class from the state of Oregon that we should have lines in our budget called, I think it's unappropriated ending fund balance. And that money that we budget is what actually carries us through from July 1 through November. Do you foresee that we're gonna be able to build that into our budget anytime soon?
Based on, that's quite right. In fact, this actually comes, I don't want to go into the details of this slide, but why, real quickly, this next slide that I've got up here, I'm basically showing the difference in, in a, the resource view that the Oregon Budget Law requires, where you put in your working capital as a resource. And, and an accountant's view, basically, where working capital is a result of your revenue and expense activity, not a part of your revenue and expense activity. So just real quickly, if you go to this column, the first item, the OLBL, which stands for the Oregon Local Budget Law, the way that they budget, they budget it on a current resource view. So you put in your beginning working capital at the top, which if you, and then you would go down to total resources, you'll see that beginning working capital revenues are added together. So what this tends to do is to, is that people will look at that total and they'll budget their expenses to that total. So they basically burn through all their current revenues they're generating, plus they burn through all the working capital. So you can see what happens the next year. You, you, you know, maybe your revenues are gonna be about the same. Maybe your expenditures need to be about the same, but now you don't have that working capital budget to, to absorb that extra. You suddenly have to decrease your expenditures a great, a great deal. But going to your point, Dawn, basically, the way that you avoid that is down here in expenditures, there's, as you mentioned, there's two categories. There's a reserve for future expenditures and there's unappropriated earnings. So to the extent you put those, you budget those, those are basically retained earnings you can carry over to the next year. You're not going to spend those this year. Even though they show up as expenditures on your budget, they're, they're not considered appropriations. And you're, you don't intend to spend them. So the answer to your question is yes. If, if, for example, we looked at the FY20 budget here, at the $62,470, if you look at the reserve for future expenditures and the unappropriated funds in that budget, it's only about $147,000.
Right.
So that basically tells you that, essentially the same thing I was mentioning before, that you, that, that $147,000 would also have been very close to the amount of working capital you would have had that if you had spent all that you had budgeted. Does that, does that answer the question? So what we'd like when we get over here, say, and this is just made up numbers for the FY21 to, to give an example, but what we, if you, if you look over on, where I've got the FY21 column, what we'd like to see in this expenditures down here, $62,355, we'd love to see a big number there in reserve for future expenditures and unappropriated. I believe the number right now, in those two figures right now in the proposed budget is about $440,000, $440,000, $450,000. And if you look at that, it should be, it's fairly close to what our ending working capital balance is also projected to be. Does that?
So I have a hard time with doing numbers in my head on the fly. So I, I guess my biggest question is, do you think with our current budget season that we're in, that we're gonna be able to allocate some money to the unappropriated ending fund so that we can carry ourselves through that next season?
The answer to that, yeah, the answer to that is yes, we have. That's the figure I was quoting of about $400,000.
Okay.
However, that will not be adequate to carry us through next season.
Oh.
Unless we cut expenditures way down.
Oh, okay. So I didn't really, well, anyway, I guess we could discuss this in our budget meeting later.
Yeah, I think we can, we can talk about it in more detail in the budget. You can get in all, in all the details. But answering your question, yes, we do have some unappropriated earnings in there. I would not consider, based on the current budget number, I would not consider them adequate to cover, take us through another, another year beyond the FY21 budget year. Rule of thumb is you should have enough, within your general fund, you should have a contingency be fund, not assuming not a contingency fund, but a contingency expense account for about 10% of your operating budget. Plus, that would be about, about, what's there, about $700,000, $800,000. So it would be, we, we should have several hundred thousand dollars sitting in that contingency account. And in addition to that, you should have, sitting in your unappropriated fund account, enough money to get you back through that dead zone from, yeah, four months. And that, that number, if you go back to the previous slide, that number is, is about $700,000. So we should have a, calculate the number in my head, we should have several hundred thousand dollars sitting in our contingency expense, and we should have about $700,000 sitting in our unappropriated fund at the end of this year to carry us through next year. We have zero in both of those accounts.
Yeah.
And we can, we can, we can cover, we will definitely can cover that more in more detail in, you know, in the budget committee and go into it as at length. I'm sorry, I didn't get this out. I'd be happy to send you a copy of this, if, if you like, anyone would like it. I'll be happy to send you a copy of this presentation. Sure. Other questions? No, thank you. Oh, did anyone have any questions on the statement revenues, the big package of financial statements I sent out a week and a half or so ago for March? No?
Thank you for doing it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Police department update?
Yes, ma'am, let me get Kevin set up here.
Sure.
You're on. All right. Can't see you. So good evening, councilors, mayor, and citizens that are on. The March 2020 police report is we have 381 calls for service that related to 19 case reports. Not much else happening because that's when all the COVID stuff, the first week, March, Sergeant McPherson and I attended the Northwest Leadership Conference. It's a big training for leadership for police and fire from all over the Pacific Northwest. It's a good training, it gets us a lot of our supervisor hours. We've taken both some online COVID-19 training and then the fire department also gave us some just for some best practices and what to do for responses to those. Other than that, March was pretty quiet as far as the start of the COVID thing. Coming into April now, our assault calls have been going up. We've also, well, I've been to the jail three times in the past two weeks, if that tells anything. So we have, people are getting a little stir crazy. And as the heat comes on, I believe our car load will go up. I believe last week we had 147 calls for service, which is pretty busy for the springtime. Usually, we don't get that busy till the summertime, so. Also, we had kind of a strange thing from the academy. We had accrued the academy, of course, they shut down the academy in the first part of March, but they didn't tell us till last Wednesday that there was three or four people in the academy that had COVID-19. It's not necessarily the academy's fault. The Oregon Health Authority didn't tell them in a timely manner and so, but as far as all of us, police chiefs and sheriffs know, most of our people have gotten through that with, past the quarantine zones, even though they weren't quarantined, because we didn't know. So nobody's shown any signs or symptoms that I know of passed there. But again, a lot of that is, all agencies have still response to this because of rules and regulations of people's medical records. So we don't know if they were employees, academy recruits, instructors that had, had the COVID-19 in the academy, but just our, our recruit is back, doing good, going through what's called FTEP, field training. And I work with her a couple days a week, because they rotate through 12-hour shifts three days a week. So when she's home, a lot of times you'll see her with me and we're working on her field training program that she has to have completed. I think it's one year past her graduation date, so we're getting a lot of that done ahead of time. That's probably all, all I have.
Go ahead, counselor.
Kevin, I'm wondering, the person that was in the academy, is it possible to have a test done so that it can be determined whether she's a carrier?
Well, my personal doctor has told me that there's gonna be some kind of antibodies test out soon. And as soon as that happens, he's gonna prescribe it to all his police environment to get tested to see if they've had the antibodies because they were exposed to it. So that's a future thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that, one of the fire people could probably correct me, but I believe the nasal swab test shows if you had it at the time. I don't think it shows if you had it after the fact.
Okay.
Thank you, chief. Brian, can we move on to what's next here?
Fire department. I'll ask Captain Scott Hollitt to brief fire.
Captain Scott Hollitt. Captain, there we go. He's turning it on. Okay.
Thank you for that. We haven't really had anything significant going on with COVID. We just maintain our day-to-day PPE when we go on calls. And our call volume has been down. We've been fairly slow. Most people that we go out and see just want us to check them out, and they don't want to go to the hospital. So we've run into that quite a bit.
Okay.
As Brian mentioned, our supplies of PPE were adequate right now. We have no serious wait time or anything for PPE. We're okay. The federal government is working on giving some funds for calls that were going on that aren't being reimbursed from Medicare. So we could receive some additional funds. I'm working with our billing department to try to implement that. But we're determining whether it'll be financially feasible for us to do that or not. That's all I have.
Okay, so quiet, huh? Have you had any walks up?
We've had a few, no more than we normally do. Not a lot of respiratory, thankfully.
Good, good, good to hear it. Well, thank you for being out there. Appreciate it. And, and, oh, and I don't know if, well, thank you for the Easter bunny.
Yes.
Thank you so much. That would be very cool.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, so on to public.
All right, can y'all hear me fine?
I can hear you.
Okay, great, great. So for Public Works, this is a report for March. Water, water distributed was 15,103,000 gallons. Wastewater treated was 16,971,000 gallons. 24 service orders, one water leak on the, on a PRV on Oak and Third. Zero wastewater repairs and eight locates. Other tasks performed were routine sewer cleaning of the known problem areas. Stevens Electric made repairs to one of our lift station hour meters. Installed amphitheater security lights, OIP office and city entrance signs. Park maintenance, building maintenance, and fleet maintenance. Russia OIP was cleared a little, not, not enough, but clearing a city-owned building stepped up due to COVID-19. Closed down playgrounds, equipment, bathroom to Salmon Creek and Green Waters Park, as well as Horton Park, and transported snowflakes and banners to Westford. And that was the Public Works report for March. Is there any questions before I move on to the agenda item?
So I just want to announce that the city has asked everybody to not flush your wipes.
Yes, please don't flush your wipes, even the ones that say they are flushable. They are not flushable. They will get stuck in a 90-degree bend, or they'll get stuck on a route in the, in the main line. That's sometimes the best-case scenario. Worst-case scenario is they get stuck on our impellers, on our lift stations, and our wastewater treatment plant, which caused catastrophic failures. They are, they're not flushable. Please do not flush them, any kind.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
For commenting on that topic.
Yes, so please, definitely use them more with the COVID-19. We definitely sanitation is an issue, but please put them in the garbage. So.
All right, Rick, move on.
All righty, so we have 10.5.1, which is the Oregon Water-Wastewater Agency Response Network. This is, this is a network of water and wastewater operators. So I can either read the, this to you or summarize it, basically, if you prefer. I wouldn't mind summarizing it, but basically, it's, it allows us to share personnel and equipment in times of emergencies, is the, the gist of the ORWRN, Oregon Water-Wastewater Agency Response Network. And we would like to become a part of this group. So.
Rick, who would you be sharing with?
That all depends. We would probably be reaching out to our closest neighbors that are on the group, but they have the right to refuse, so it would probably be more than one. There's a list of the, of ones that are close here on the agenda, on the agenda bill. But for example, City of Cottage Grove, Corvallis, Eugene wastewater, Florence, Harrisburg, Redmond, Salem, Springfield, a couple special districts, Crescent Water, Land County, Environmental Health, Rainbow District, and Springfield Utilities Board. Those are all of our, those are just ones that are close to us. There's a list of 139 participants on this.
Perfect, thank you.
And so there's no membership for it or?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Not a membership fee for it?
There is no membership fee for it. There would only be a fee if we ask people to, to show up. And that fee would be their wages at that agency's, whatever that agency's scale is, whatever. For example, if we got one from Eugene, we would pay their normal wages plus food and lodging according to Oregon State per diem for our area. And then any materials that we would use would use. And then any materials that we would use would either be replacement value or actual materials.
And so our system, I can't figure out how to ask those questions. The systems that we have for wastewater and for water are, have, have comms systems and other things that they would reach out to and say, need some help, or it's just this like, help to come actually fix something?
This would be.
How do you use this? Can you give me examples?
We would use it if, for example, we had to quarantine some of our crew.
Oh, okay.
So, or, you know, about a year ago, we lost a crew member. Thankfully, he's coming back with us now. But that would have been another great example of a time we could have used it as well for a short time. If somebody had a wastewater level three operator they could spare in the meantime. In regards to the style of plants, we have SBR, which is sequential batch reactors. Unfortunately for us, that's not a very common style. But what is fortunate is we would be requesting somebody at the same level of operator. It would be level three. We wouldn't be able to allow a level two. So the operators we would be borrowing would be sufficiently trained, trained in knowing what the limits are of what we could put out for the wastewater, for example. So they'd just be able to take a look at our permits. And then best-case scenario, they would be able to run the plant per those permits.
And have we ever been a part of Coalition before?
No, not that I'm aware of. Not for this.
And how long has Coalition been going?
This one here, you know, I don't know the answer, to be honest with you. I don't know how long.
Brand new.
I'm sorry?
This is not brand new.
No, it's not brand new. No. But as far as an actual age, I don't have the answer for you. But assuming that there's 139 members, that would make me think it's been here for a little while.
Okay. I think that's assumption. Any other questions there?
So what happens if we have somebody come in and they help us, and they do something that messes up our system? Is there any way to hold them accountable for that, to help repair something that they've broken?
Well, if it, unless it's absolute damage due to absolute negligence, then I'm not so sure that we can. That is a good question. It's not really outlined in their documents. But I'm going to go with the assumption of, unless we could prove absolute negligence and intentional damage, I think that we're kind of stuck with the same situation as if it was one of our guys who had made a mistake. That's what, we would fall back on our insurance.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on a second. Would our insurance cover these other guys, Rick?
Yeah, as long as they're certified.
Our insurance would cover these coming from these other places.
Yeah, they have identity clauses in the agreement, which would allow the insurance to cover them.
All right.
All right, Bobby, go ahead.
Thank you. I move we direct the city staff to complete the necessary steps to become a member of the Oregon Water Wastewater Agency Response Network.
Give a second.
For a second. Any further discussion? Offer of votes, please, Jeff.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon? Counselor Porcom?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor McMillan?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
That passes. Thank you, Council. Let them see pages here. Community Services update.
So, yes, if I may, I'd like to talk planning.
Okay.
So just a reminder, planning typically, reports run more than 30 days behind in the event there was ever an appeal. So this report would be for February. We had a minor partition on School Street, which was approved. It was a 9.9 acre lot that was divided into three, three new, two new lots, one at .3 acre and one at .6 acres. That was a pretty simple, just splitting up a tax lot. That was the work done in February from the Planning Commission. A little update on the TSP, if I may. Had a conversation with ODOT and Kittleson recently. And due to the COVID-19 concerns, we all kind of were in agreeance that we would like to pick the TSP back up when everybody can be in the same room again, within reason. I know that the council had recently signed another amendment to lengthen the contract. And ODOT is willing to sign yet another one, so that when it does come time for public hearings, for the TSP, we can allow actually public to get together. So the only stipulation to that, and this was a conversation that came from ODOT, is the Federal Highway Administration has a deadline for this in September. But they're also expecting that the Federal Highway Administration would be amenable to extending that contract as well. So at this point in the conversation, we're going to talk again in 30 days, see where we are. But at this point, everybody who is working the TSP is willing to wait until we could all get in the same room again.
Excellent. Thank you for that report, Rick.
And I have one more, if I may. This one is kind of, kind of, these dates are kind of early, but they're very tentative. We would have our first public hearing for the OIP rezone of 12 lots on May 19th with Planning Commission. And then from that recommendation, it would then go to City Council. And tentatively, that would be the June 4th meeting, unless you all wanted to put it on a special meeting, because it would be a public hearing. And then we could, of course, decide that date. But tentatively, May 19th for the Planning Commission, if we can, for our first viewing of the OIP rezone, and then June 4th for City Council. And because it's a zoning map amendment, it will have to go to both. So.
Okay, Counselor.
Rick, does that mean that whoever it was, I think maybe it was the USDA that you were seeking approval from, that that's done?
Well, there's actually a couple agencies involved. So I think the one you're thinking about is DLCD, Department of Lands Conservation and Development.
Okay, right.
It's not so much that we seek their approval. It's more so they overlook our shoulders to make sure we do it in a manner that aligns with Oregon State planning rules. So basically, if we overstep outside of Oregon State planning law, then they'll step in. But otherwise, it's not so much of a asking if we could do this. It's them watching and make sure we do it correctly, if that's, if that's the one you're referring to.
It just makes me curious whether or not USDA is involved at all because of the, you know, the fact that they funded that purchase to begin with.
No, currently, they're not involved in a rezone, other than we do give them the, to say, hey, we've rezoned it. It would just be an information, not a request for any type of permissions. So, but another agency that is involved in this on a minor level was DEQ. When I first talked to DEQ shortly after the adoption of the Mill Park Plan, their concerns with that being zoned into a park, they've been brought into that Mill Park Plan from day one. So I was kind of surprised that they were concerned. I was kind of surprised that they showed concern. But after they talked to them themselves, they realized that it's already being used in a park-like setting. And they have requested that if we do rezone it to a park, we install no fishing signs. And that's what.
Okay. I think we were going to do that a long time ago, weren't we?
Right, right.
You're right.
So they've requested us to make sure that we do our best to make sure nobody fishes out of those ponds. Other than that, they really didn't have a problem with the rezone of Lot 39, Lot 3, and Lot 4 for parked and open spaces.
Okay. So, so Rick, can I ask, so you have May 19th for the commission meeting?
Yes.
And it's not possible. And the reason we're doing it in May and not April is because we need to get all the paperwork together. Is that why?
That, and COVID.
Okay.
A little bit of both, because it's going to be, it's going to be a public hearing. And I'm pretty sure I shared with you all the requirements and steps for public hearings electronically.
Okay.
So it'll be a bit of work to do it electronically. So I'm even unsure. We'll see what happens. But tentatively, you know, towards, as this month goes along, I have to get a 20-day notice out for the end of this month. And I have just two weeks shy to do that. So I'm going to judge that in two weeks and see where we are. Another piece of that puzzle is planning commissioners and their willingness to participate electronically.
I think they have a choice, too.
Well, maybe.
If we ask this happen and say, we need to have them.
I know equipment will be a concern. We'll have to provide equipment to two, possibly three of our commissioners in order to even make that happen. So.
In order for them to be able to join on the telephone?
On a, no, because that would have to be on a laptop. We'd have to, it'd be a little bit more, per those recommendations, DLCD, it's a little bit more stringent.
Okay. So I would ask that you reach out to ElCOG and tell them that we may have it in a need, and they may be able to support with some of that equipment?
Sure. That is a great idea. So we would be needing to provide them laptops.
To use.
Exactly.
Yeah. I can tell you, a lot of the staff people that work for ElCOG are all telecommuting. And I'm not sure. It's a good idea, but I just want to.
Well, I think we should make, I'm not going to presume that they do or do not have it. But considering this is our cog.
I agree.
Let's make that ask and see what can do. Even if we have, even if they have to go out to another community, ask if they can borrow some laptop from Cottage Grove, request well, so we have this meeting. I want this to be a stopping block. Kind of, we kind of really have been moving forward well since zoning. And I know it's a hell on, Ricky put a lot into it. But I don't want to, I don't want to pull back on them. I don't want the planning commission to, oh, we can't, when we can figure a way to do it for them. I mean, how long?
So here's my other, I have one more question. So they don't view our IT, since they're not, since we don't contract with them for our IT, would they provide those to us?
Oh, that's why I said we should ask. I'll answer. But we should ask and see if they have suggestions.
Okay.
So I would definitely ask that question. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Do we have some laptops at City Hall?
So that is correct. We do have some laptops at City Hall. Those are in the hands of my operators at the moment for social distancing, because I have two that were in my office. Both that were assigned to me, they're assigned to my crew, and I've assigned them out so that, to make it more convenient for them to social distance, or to do their job from a distance.
Right. And I appreciate that. But I'm just thinking, for one meeting, could we just borrow them back for two hours and then?
Potentially. Yeah. I mean, yeah.
My school district also. Do they have enough laptops there? Understanding to supply the students, so they do distance learning, they may have a few for meetings. And I'm happy to help out in any way I can, Rick, if you need me to make some, I can do that too.
Perfect. Yes, I like that idea, too. Yes, please.
I'll reach out. Great. Thank you, Rick. Is there anything else you have to report to us?
That was all I had, unless there's any more questions.
Mayor, I have one thing to bring up on the community services area. I let the council know that we did get the paperwork today from ODOT to execute the transfer of funds from the federal government to the state government for IMBA.
Oh, God.
We're looking that over to make sure it's copacetic. And you guys, the council will probably view it next week during the special session before the working session.
Wonderful. That is, that is a long time coming. And I cannot believe the hoops we have jumped through.
And to piggyback off what Brian had just said, we have put out a bid for the single-use bathroom with, for Diamond View Park. Those bids should be coming back today. So hopefully I'll have some bid documents to share with you guys. My intention is to first share it with the Parks and Community Services Committee. And hopefully, we could come up with a recommendation to share with you guys here very soon. So that was the plan for that. So thanks for reminding me, Ryan, or for reminding us.
And Bill has one last statement here.
Yeah, just in case everybody thinks the financial director is always doom and gloom, I do want to let you know that we did get our formal loan forgiveness for the IFA loan yesterday. So the 700-plus thousand is formally forgiven.
Excellent. Excellent news, too. Thank you for including positive news. I see full applauding. That's wonderful. So I will ask, before, during this meeting, if there is any further comment from anyone who has dialed in that would like to make comments. And I'm looking in and listening. So Holler, Kenny?
So I know you're asking for other people, but I think the Parks and Community Services Committee needs some recognition, because they really worked hard at pulling all those pieces together and really looking at the stuff from the immigrant and getting that on the table, pushing it forward, and making sure it didn't get lost out there. And I just think they did a fantastic job. And the people that are on that committee deserve a huge thank you for their work.
Bobby, yes, thank you for, I see, we have another public, oh, Rick, I say something before I, I, Trudy?
What's that?
Did you want to say something? I see your finger.
Oh, yeah. I was going to make another comment, since we kind of have a little bit of time here, which we usually don't. There's a couple people on tonight that I would like to say thank you to as well, Linda and Jason. And Kathy is familiar with this. There's kind of a group starting up for grant writing. I'm very excited. It's, Linda and Sarah Ultimus really kind of started this, and it's picked up a lot of momentum. We've been having Zoom meetings on Fridays, and really excited about that. That's looking for some good help from all those people. And if anybody else would like to comment about that, I would definitely encourage it.
Thank you, Rick, for that up. Yeah, it's been nice. Jen, I see you popped up there. Are you wanting to say something? No? Okay.
This is Jason.
Hi, Jason.
Hey. I just wanted to say I am very excited as well to be working on these grants. And really looking forward to seeing the Mill Park become all it can be.
Wonderful. No, and we appreciate it, too. And so, Trudy, you've been patient over this. Can you unmute yourself? And I welcome your comments. Go for it.
I have more praise for Public Works. Thank you for having the holes on Berry Street patched. I appreciate that. They were kind of ankle breakers. Thank you so much.
Thanks for bringing that up and acknowledging. Appreciate it. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a quick little go back for Rick about the IMBA thing. Does that include that pergola thing, the undercover area for the Diamond View Park?
Yes, it will. But what that looks like, I don't have an answer yet. The reason I say I don't have an answer, because we need to wait and see what these bids come back at for the single-use bathroom. Single-use bathroom is number one. We were expecting between $60,000 to $80,000 for that single-use bathroom. I know that's a $20,000 range. And that $20,000 range is going to affect what we can do as far as the size of a pavilion.
Makes perfect sense. I just think that'll be a nice little area for that side of the community. So I'm kind of excited to see that over there. Thanks for your work on that.
In, in. I think, in uh, in conclusion, you know, is there, is there any other public that want comment?
Linda here.
Linda, yes, go for it, please.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Um, uh, appreciate everybody's work, and thank you for the compliments, and uh, we're all working together. One small thing, um, just kind of a community um, uh, contribution. Uh, one day last week, I went outside, and on my porch was a little container of chalk and a little note attached to it, and, and the invitation to draw art on the sidewalk. And I know my neighbors across the street, the Karen Abbott's family, they did the same thing. I don't know who left them, but thank you.
I thought it was you, and I'm the best reader. Um, that was really, really nice. And you know, I just wanted to say, um, that it has really, um, this past month or two, I think, um, watching community members pop and want to be involved. Either because they have, uh, have a passion for something such as Jason, or because they have a recognition that, that um, supporting our business and helping the economic health of the community takes more hands than have, um, just in the walls of City Hall. And I think a lot of people just forwarded. I am so grateful for that. And I just repeatedly wanna pat everybody on the back and, and call that out, because that's what community about. Thanks to everyone who it's been so hard to keep us going, and administration of council, public, abiding by the rules and wearing your mask, doing your, your just being, and still getting in there and try grants and do suggestions. So, keep for everybody. Is there further comments, counsel? Bobby, your hand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to drag it out, I promise. Um, I thought I heard earlier Brian say Captain Scott Hollid, is that a change?
Yeah.
From what we had before?
It is a change.
That's exciting. So congratulations to him.
Yes.
Well, congratulations, Scott.
Alright, on that note, that we will adjourn, and we thank you everyone, and stay safe there.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.